You guys.
I've gone through the minutes, I believe they look accurate. Move that we approved the minutes as drafted here.
Second.
We can move to second, approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
File them.
Guess Kevin, you want?
Yeah, I'll give a brief description. We've had a few requests in our central business district as it relates to residential use only. We have asked Alisa Duffy Rogers, and she is part of CT Consultants, to draft some language for us. These couple requests were specific to residential on first floor as well. And our comprehensive plan does support that use. And the idea was that these residential uses can support our businesses. So, like I said, she drafted some language for us. And that language I provided you, she is going to describe that more in detail, as well as kind of a presentation that is also on your, in your packet, as it relates to our zoning code update. And that kind of, one's gonna kind of roll into the next. So, I'll let her start and certainly, do you have any questions as we go? Ron, did you have anything to add?
No, I just, you know, we did our community plan, comprehensive plan update, and it's actually been two years now. And, you know, traditionally, you follow that up with looking at your other tools, subdivision regulations, zoning ordinance, that type of effort. And we've done this many different ways, and Dan, you can attest, because you've been here a long time. As far as the approach of taking our zoning ordinance, which is where we are today, looking at how we can bisect it, update it, redraft it, restructure it, all the above. And we've done it a bunch of different ways through the years. So, Alisa's gonna help us this time and facilitate that process. And this is kind of the beginning of it. And at the front end of that is an actual text amendment that relates a little bit. There's one fly in here, and he keeps one of his fingers. It goes to whoever's talking. Keep an eye on him if you open your mouth. But anyway, so this is the beginning of that process. And we'll talk about, I think where we want to get to this evening in that regard is getting a scope, and I'll let Alisa talk about that, getting a scope of how we want to approach it, how much work is in each part of it, you know, what's our best approach for that, and a timeline, kind of a basic timeline that we can start with to commit to, you know, reviewing it and going over the text and any potential changes to the zoning ordinance. So, and then I would, you all have not met Sheri, I don't believe, right? Julie retired, and Sheri Sherpenberg has replaced her in her position. So, she's actually been with us for about six weeks, five weeks?
I wish I had that much time under my belt.
Three weeks. She was with Julie for a couple of weeks. So, we didn't just hang her out there by herself. So, a few weeks, and obviously, first meeting. And I know there's other guests here, or attendees. Connie Grubbs is on city council, if you haven't met Connie. And Pat Hiredy is on design review board, and you probably have met Pat somewhere in the past. So, feel free to be engaged in the process. And I guess if you want to go ahead and start us through that.
Awesome. So, as they said, I'm Alisa Duffy Rogers with CT Consultants. I tend to be pretty informal. And so, while there is a presentation here that we'll go through, please feel free to interrupt, ask questions, talk, and let's make this as interactive as we possibly can. So, as Ron and Kevin said, you have finished your comp plan about two minutes ago. And the main implementations we've put out really is your zoning code. And then, in addition to all of that, we've had, the city's had people come forward and ask for these residential uses downtown. And so, when we got together and talked about how to structure tonight, we're sort of gonna, as Kevin said, merge the topics together and spend the first few minutes talking a little bit about zoning tools, take a break in that, talk about the zoning text amendment, come back and talk about how we could potentially update your zoning ordinance. And then, as Ron was saying, we've got a lot of processes we look like, what your engagement may be, how long it's gonna take, and where we think this is gonna go. Any questions before we start off?
We have a lot of residential uses in the CBD right now. Are those all non-conforming uses, or does the, the ordinance allow those in some cases?
The residential uses on first floors, if they're single-family homes or if they're on the first floor, those are non-conforming. It does allow for residential uses, obviously, on second through.
So, the main thrust of this is allowing residential on the first floor?
True.
For the proposed amendments, and we can talk about why and how we're doing that when we get to that part. All right, so let's start a little bit, I talked about what zoning tools are out there. As you know, your existing code is very much a Clintonian or conventional zoning code, meaning that it pretty much deals with land use, that's its organizing principle. There are three other types of zoning tools out there. Form-based code, which is what you're looking at in terms of the amendments moving toward. It was also talked about quite extensively in your community plan. There's performance zoning, and then there's hybrid codes. And so, as Ron said, really and truly zoning is the primary way which we come in the community plan. And so, we're looking at now trying to do that. And zoning is really important because it creates places. And how we, the tools we decide on will help us create the place that we want Fort Thomas to be. So, we'll spend a few minutes reviewing the zoning types and then move into the zoning amendments. So, as I said, your Clintonian zoning is what your current code is. Its foundation is basically land use. And it really isn't named after the mathematician. It's actually named after a Supreme Court case in 1926 called the Village of Euclid versus Amherst. That was when the US Supreme Court said that you could have zoning as a legitimate lease power. So, it dates back to that far back. And as I said, its organizing principle really is land use. And as, if you can imagine what our country was like in 1926, we had lots of incompatible land uses jammed in together, right? So, we had smokestack-type industries next door to someone's home. And so, the idea behind zoning really was to separate those incompatible land uses. And so, that's why it is that way. And that's how the Supreme Court case originally legitimized Clintonian zoning. And so, really and truly, what ends up happening is when you separate land uses all over the place, and you put houses in one place, a commercial in one place, and industrial in another, you end up having to drive everywhere, right? And so, it ends up not having the opportunity to have the walkability that's talked about in your comp plan, and you lack the benefits of mixed use. The other thing that happens with your Clintonian or conventional zoning is you have very blunt development standards. And we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into the proposed zoning amendments. Basically, you have a pretty large envelope on the site where you can stick your building, but you, as a community, don't know where that building's precisely going to be on the lot. That's just typical for conventional zoning. The result of that is you really do lab-traitability in your built environment. And so, as a result of that, a number of years ago, practitioners started looking at different ways, really, truly, to look at how to do zoning beyond just using land use as your organizing principle. So, the first sort of iteration of that was something called performance zoning, and really and truly, not many communities use it. The idea behind it is that it's very flexible and very creative. And what it does is instead of specifying what land uses can go on a piece of property, it says you can have land uses that have these types of external impacts. And so, it looks at traffic, noise, owner, all those external impacts, and say, if you meet these standards, you can go here. But it doesn't actually say anything about use. It's just these particular standards. The reason some communities go to that is because in many ways, it's black and white. Like, do you generate X number of trips? Or do you have this amount of light pollution? Or do you have Y amount of noise? The problem with it is that you end up having to have very, very discreet standards. And then, you have to have someone on staff who's ready to stand out there with a light meter or whatever else to figure out whether or not what you've allowed on this piece of property continues to meet those performance standards. It's not unusual for zoning codes to have some element of performance zoning in them, right? Can't exceed this amount of decibels, or you're gonna have that amount of pollution. But for that to be your organizing principle for how you do land use, it's pretty unusual in the United States. And then, you have the form-based code, which was talked about a lot in your community plan. And really and truly, it is the alternative that most places are going to these days if they start looking at something other than that conventional zoning where you're just solely looking at land use. And truly, what the community plan talks about is really using a form-based code mostly in your non-residential areas. And the foundation for it, or the organizing principle instead of being land use, is exactly what the code says, its name says, its form. It's the form of the built environment and how the built environment interacts with the public realm or the public street. So, it really does look at the building form being the primary organizing element and use being the second. So, all of this is in your packet if you want to sort of follow along, what people are talking about. The benefits to a form-based code is it really does have a more competitive built form than a conventional code. The key to it really, though, is deciding upfront what form you want, and then drafting standards to get you there, right? So, that's the key to it, is you have to really understand what form, what you want your community character to be so that you can design standards to get you there. And as I said, it really does emphasize the physical form of development and how that development relates to the street. So, we talked about a few tools here. Any question on those before we sort of dive a little bit further into the form-based code?
If any one of these can come up with being... Fort Thomas is an area that's built out, basically.
It is.
We've got ridges, roads down the middle. We don't have vast areas to create things.
Right.
So, we're filling in at best.
Right. So, which tool works best for that?
Yeah.
So, you're jumping ahead a little bit, but I'll tell you, I'll give you the spoiler alert. In my professional opinion, and please feel free to challenge that at any point in time that you don't agree with it, is your best bet is to do a form-based code in your non-commercial areas where you do have, where you really want to impact change, and then to use a conventional Clintonian code in your other areas. There are planners, truthfully, who are gonna disagree with me on that. Because they're gonna say, if you have very defined character within your residential district, you need a form-based code in order to make sure that anything that gets torn down or any additions can complement the existing form. I'm gonna be very frank with you and tell you that that's gonna be a waste of money. Even because it's gonna take an enormous amount of effort for CT consultants to document what your existing built forms is in every single solitary, single-family detached neighborhood. I do understand, based on your community plan, and again, if you disagree with what I'm saying, please do. I understand that one of your goals is really, truly, look at your single-family districts and allow people to invest in their homes and to modernize them and add additions and those kinds of things without having to go through a various process potentially. And we could do that through a conventional code as opposed to through a form-based code. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Do we put a real burden on a guy like Kevin if we kind of create both of these?
No, you don't.
At the same time? I mean, each, they born and bred like...
It goes by district, anyway.
...the land use, because we test this every time, well, longer before I got here.
No, really and truly, you don't. Because we, there are some communities who do put a huge, huge emphasis on, or a huge burden on staff by saying you have one set of development review processes for your conventional part of your code, and another set of development review processes for your form-based code. And by doing that, you have two separate review processes. You have staff trying to remember which code goes with what review process, and it's a nightmare, truthfully. So, what I would suggest is whatever we ultimately decide to do, that you have the exact same development review process, whether your standards are form-based or land use-based. And then, all of your, you know, your parking standards are gonna be the same, whether it's a form-based or a conventional-based. All of those things will all work together so that we don't put any greater burden either on staff or on you as the planning commissioner.
Because I think we're kind of unique as a city. We have a planning commission. It's not county-driven.
Right.
It's a city, which has been a long time. So, I think we want to maintain that.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
It wouldn't change the structure of the board.
No. I was just saying, we don't, we want to maintain what we do.
I mean, I would agree with what she said. So, Bellevue, Covington, essentially have moved to a hybrid.
That was my next question, of who around us is doing it.
Cincinnati has as well.
Yes, Cincinnati.
And I would add, the, the performance zoning, there's small elements of that in our zoning text already. So, for example, in noise, there's noise issues related to, you know, any kind of industrial type of use or something like that. And that's not unusual. First of all, if you go backwards, our zoning text originated from the model zoning ordinance that was developed by the Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission in the late 60s. So, our zoning text has lived in its present form since then and has been modified. And that's true of most of Northern Kentucky. In recent years, some of the neighboring communities have stepped away from that completely and gone with a much more natural form-based code. Ours is a little bit hybrid in that some of the issues that we've experienced with our general commercial and our business district areas, when we developed the central business district zoning, that was really a step toward form-based code because we, we got away from very stringent setbacks and some of the other development requirements of parking and so forth that really limited a lot of how we were able to approach our business districts. So, we've kind of stepped toward that, but not completely. And, and so, I think that's where we are today.
And your code really is, is not that bad. I have seen ones that are awful, that make you wonder how anything gets built and gets built in any kind of a quality way. You're not there. I mean, I think, you know, Ron is 100% right. We are starting with a, we're doing, Alisa talks about a zoning code update. We're not talking about a rewrite. We're not talking about burning it and starting over again. You've got a good foundation, in my opinion.
So, can you move on? Real quick, you show the picture on this first slide for form-based code of those buildings in our Midway District there?
Yes, sir.
And so, connect the two, the word "form-based code" or the words "with" those pictures, and why did you choose that? Does that just say, like, if you're gonna develop anything in this area, if you were under form-based code, you would say, well, your buildings have to be up on the sidewalk, your buildings have to be, you know, commercial and the first floor residential. So, is that what form-based means as related to those pictures, that picture there?
You're 90% there.
Okay.
So, what form does is exactly what you said. Where it has to be on the lot, and typically, that's either done with a build-to line or a minimum or maximum setback. So, we're saying exactly where we want it to be, because keep about what your underlying goal is. Your under, and that, you'll hear me talk about this over the next 18 months. You'll be tired of hearing me say this. Every time, we have to think about what our end goal is and how we're gonna get there. So, our end goal is to either create or preserve what you want within these non-residential districts in terms of character, right? So, I chose this picture because when I think about the Midway, and I spent about three hours one day walking the streets where all these pictures were taken. This is what I think you, you want your form for Midway to look like. And so, keep in mind, the other thing I said about form-based code is that form is first, use is second, right? We don't ever want to completely forget about use, but we are looking at form being first. So, we may, as we start talking about the multi-family with flex space, we may allow residential, for example, on the first floor. But that form of that building has to be to either, A, create, to create the character that you want, and to do what planners call "bring the inside out," right? We really want to create a place where community members feel like they're engaging with the buildings, feel like they're in a vibrant place. And in order to do that, you need these open windows that you see here, right? If you go a little further down the street this way, you all know this, there was a building that was formerly at one point some sort of commercial space. It's now completely multi-family. You walk by it, and what's the first thing you feel? As you're walking by to try to get to the next commercial space on the other side, and you feel this emptiness, right? And there has to be something on the other side of that building that you really want to go to for you to feel comfortable walking by it. And historically, when you look at places like this, where you have that big gap, whether it's caused by a building that doesn't quite address the street well, or it's caused because there's a parking lot or whatever else, the retail space that's on the other side of that gap always does worse than the one on the other side. So, what we're trying to do is create a character in your streets that people want to walk down and be a part of. So, I chose this picture deliberately. You are correct. Because this is what we're gonna be trying to replicate in Midway. The other thing we should be talking about is right now, again, we're sort of going all over the place here, but that's okay. Right now, your CBD zoning covers both Midway and Downtown. When you move toward a form-based code, probably we may do something different, right? There may be a Midway form-based, and there may be a Downtown form-based. If you decide you want different characters, you may decide that you don't. But that could be something that we could do in order to create two different type places, if that's what you choose to do. My goal for you is to help you figure that out and then to write the standards. But I'm not gonna come and entertain what you, what your desire is. That's just not who I am as a planner, or as a consultant for that matter. Any other questions? So, one more, a little bit more about form-based code, and then we'll start talking about the amendments. So, there are five main elements to a form-based code. And this graphic's not the best. So, on the next-to-last page of your packet, you'll see that reproduce a little better. And then, also, you'll have a chart that shows you the differences between conventional and the proposed. So, the five main elements of a form-based code are a regulating plan, and essentially, that's your zoning map. Some planners decide we need to call it something different. That's essentially what it is. Second element is public standards, meaning it specifies what should be in the right-of-way and how that right-of-way should then marry to the street. Form-based code spends a lot of time talking about that transition between the public and the private. As Dan rightly pointed out, you have lots of your infrastructure already in place. So, this may be a part of the, the form-based code that we don't necessarily need to do very much with. Fort Thomas Avenue in Downtown is already the section that it's going to be, right? But we need to think about how the building addresses that section. The third element is building standards. And again, that's the form that we're creating with the standards that we are writing. And we'll talk about that a little bit more when we move into the zoning amendments. But again, we're still talking about how buildings create the public realm or the public space, and that transition between the two. Form-based codes have administration, development review processes, just like existing conventional codes, and then definitions. Whether you're doing a form-based code or a conventional code, definitions are your friend. Whether you're doing land use definitions or whether you're...
I'll second that.
Or whether you're defining, because we can talk about form all day long, but if nobody knows what you're talking about when they read standards, then it, it doesn't help anybody, right? If we're talking about we want something to be predictable, then we have to define what our terms are. And so, while definitions are probably everyone's least favorite thing, from where Kevin is sitting, they are his, like I said, they're his friend, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think Tim would agree, too.
Yes.
They are your friend. And just a little bit aside about you, I've spent a lot of years being a planner on both sides of the fence. I have been both a municipal planner and then a consultant as well. And I've sat in Kevin's shoes and said, oh, boy, we don't define that very well. So, you know, Mr. Smith, you can do X. Or we do define that really well, and Mr. Rogers, you can't. So, I very much understand the importance of definitions. So, let's segue into our amendments, which I think everyone got a copy of. So, as both Kevin and Ron said, today in the central business district, whether it's Midway or Downtown, residential spaces are only permitted above the ground floor. And that's specifically in your, in your chapter on the CBD. What we have, I understand y'all have gotten some interest in having some residential in Downtown that is not on the first floor. So, usually, the next question is gonna be, why was that even put in the ordinance to begin with? Historically, it was put in the ordinance, it was put in ordinances because it was felt like mixed use always had to be vertical. And then, when I was here a few weeks ago, the mayor was nice enough to tell me a story that some of your buildings were, at some point, you know, retail or office on the first floor. And then, when times got bad, they became multi-family. And so, that was the other reason it was put in the ordinance, because people, you really didn't want those buildings closed up like we were talking about and becoming multi-family on the first floor. But again, I mean, you didn't have the tools when that happened that we have now. So, what these amendments do is add a couple of different options for residential in the Downtown that provides you a horizontal mixture of uses. Also, create character, also create a form that has people engaged with those buildings that's sort of walking down the street. So, those are row houses. And we're also looking at multi-family with flex space. We'll talk a little bit more about what that means, and then live-work units. So, your existing development standards look like this in your, in your Downtown, right? You give a minimum lot area, and you give a minimum width. And then, you say, aside the front and the rear setbacks are as approved by the planning commission, which as Ron said, was a move toward a form-based code. Because at that point, you start thinking that you don't want buildings set way back from the street if all of your buildings are at the street. So, it gave you the discretion to be looking at a site plan. And then, it sets a maximum building height of four stories, on 50 feet. What these form standards do, and if you maybe had an opportunity to look at them, in addition to talking about the uses, so obviously, a row house is a use, right? And to go back to, I can read Dan's point, I chose this picture for a reason. These are some kind of examples of row houses that are right down there on Green Street. To give you an idea of what it would feel like to have those as you're walking down north Fort Thomas Avenue, as opposed to the senior tenement detached homes that are currently there. So, the idea being that you're moving those toward the street and creating more urban use and more dense residential. Because unfortunately, in order to support commercial, in order for it to either locate or survive, or you need a fairly strong population mix. So, you need a lot of residential downtown and around Downtown in order for commercial enterprises to feel comfortable locating there and then to be viable. So, what these do is give you that additional density in terms of residential. So, the row houses, so let's just talk about those for a minute. So, instead of just having, you know, this few standards that we saw on the page before, we actually start talking about things like, not only the dimension of the lots, but we do things like, you know, mandate a minimum and a maximum height. We talk about the number of units that have to be gathered. We talk about the width of the row house. We talk about how it's set on the lot, right? The minimum is 10 feet setback from the sidewalk, the maximum is 18 foot. Again, keeping in mind that what we're trying to do is to create a form downtown that gives you the character that you want. And then, we get in even more minute detail. We start talking about a minimum transparency on the floor. So, you have to have 15% transparency so that you have windows, so you don't have those spaces that are all blocked off like the building that we have down here on the, on the Midway. And then, we talk about where parking can be located, you know, requiring private open space, and then even allowing an encroachment such as a porch to come even further into the setback, similar to what you have on Green Street. So, obviously, we have gone from, you know, I was able to capture all of your development standards for Downtown in five lines. And there's nothing wrong with that, because truthfully, I'm gonna commend you for having had the foresight to not try to come up with some sort of minimum or maximum setback, or do like a lot of other communities have done, and try to impose a suburban standard Downtown. When I saw this, I saw these people have incredible foresight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess one question I have for you. So, if we would move to a more form-based zone for the CBD, how do you envision the design review board, review process being integrated into that?
So, your design review standards, because I read them, are definitely more toward architectural standards. At least, that was, that's my interpretation, and if I'm wrong, please tell me. Whereas, these are more form standards, right? This is where it goes on the, on the lot. And then, the only time we deal with architecture is things like transparency or the width of openings or those kinds of things. So, I would see your design review board continuing to form the role that they do. The question that comes up in your community plan is should their role be extended beyond your CBD? And that's a question we'll have to address. So, I'm not sure if that's the question you're asking me, or...
Yes and no. I mean, I think one of the, one of the attributes of the way, the flexibility that's built in there now...
now is that we aren't dictating the setback. No, we're not dictating the building form necessarily. I mean, we've had our ideal scenarios, somewhere a little grary building that's being built across the street, but, you know, a lot of what's happened to date have been conversions of older residential structures into commercial structures and vice versa. And the viability of the CBD from a commercial standpoint is, yeah. So I guess I'm a little bit hesitant in moving to a full bore form-based code with strict setbacks or building form requirements because either the market won't be there to respond to that or it kind of takes away our flexibility to some degree. And not just from an architectural standpoint, but just from a massing standpoint, a parking standpoint, because a lot of these individual lots are pretty constrained from a developer's standpoint, unless you do a consolidation of several parcels.
Right.
It's just difficult to come in here and build something new from scratch on a single parcel anyway.
Right.
And so there's just a lot of challenges involved. And I'm not saying one way or the other. I think that there's merit in looking at it. But I think the way it's structured now gives both the planning commission and the design review board a lot of flexibility in, you know, offering both input, but then also providing a developer the flexibility to respond to unique situations that are physically, you know, responding to the constraints on the site.
Right. So, you know, for whatever strange reason, my entire career, either as a municipal planner or as a consultant, has been in built-out communities. And I have no idea why that's happened. It just has. And so I very much get that. So the first thing I always do is look at your existing lots. So I've spent a lot of time staring at GIS. And I also did, it's on page eight of your amendments. Whether it's a row house or whether it's the multifamily with flex space, you have the ability to give a waiver to every single solitary standard, you being the planning commission. And I specifically did that because you're built out. And that gives you some standards by which to evaluate them. But knowing that there may be situations where people want to develop on a single lot or they may want to consolidate lots. But either way, even though I can spend the next 40 hours staring at every single solitary parcel that you have in your central business district, I'm not going to be able to identify every single solitary constraint, whether it's the lot size, lot shape, the topography, access, existing structures on either side. There's just no way for me to do that. So every single solitary standard, whether it's for the row house or for the multifamily with flex space, you have the ability to grant a waiver. And again, that was a conscious choice that they come here so that it can be evaluated as a part of the entire site plan, as opposed to having to go to your board of adjustment, which has the situation where you have, people happen to be in different places. They have a different purview. They have a different standard by which you have to grant a variance, which they may or not have a hardship, it just may simply be for whatever particular purpose. So I think it's important that we allow those waivers. Does that
Right. And in most of the cases that we've had, either in Midway or up here in the CBD, generally we have granted waivers for one aspect or the other of the zoning ordinance because of existing conditions that, you know, there are legitimate constraints that they're just not practical to overcome.
Right.
You know, on adaptive reuse or even a significant renovation, unless you're going to come in and do like the project across the street where you have a consolidation and you have a decent amount of land to work with.
Help me to understand from a legal standpoint, if we give waivers to anything, then how do we stop from being accused of being arbitrary and capricious when we don't give someone a waiver that we gave to that guy and that guy and that guy? That's concerning to me.
So Tim, I want to have a
Well, I think you always run into that difficulty. The key is building in certain definitions and conditions. And, you know, it's a fact-sensitive situation. I think you've got to be able to look at each scenario and be able to identify particular factual differences that make it unique and make it deserving of a waiver. But are you always concerned about the fact that you could be declared to be arbitrary and capricious? Absolutely. I think Tim will tell you, that's something, that's how we make our living for certain.
Jerry, on another note, just from a governmental standpoint, really, the board of adjustment asks that all the time.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. And so really, to your point, I think you're kind of transferring those responsibilities to a planning commission versus your board of adjustment.
But we need to be extra careful then when we approve something to make sure the conditions really pretty much zero in to a certain set of criteria that someone else, the next guy can't come along and say, well, you did it for them. And we will have to say, well, yeah, we did it for them because of this, 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 you don't have those criteria.
So you're finding that facts are important.
The second question I had was what would you see the design review board doing if in fact, you know, most of this stuff could really be done at the staff level as far as reviewing a plan, you know, if it meets the setbacks within the setbacks and the heights and sizes of a form-based kind of zoning ordinance? And what would the design review board really be doing? I mean, would they be getting into colors and decorative details and stuff like they do now? I mean, I don't know what they would be doing under that
I can jump in. That's exactly what we're doing. More than anything else, the design review board, what we do is we look at what people are proposing to do. And probably at least 50% of the time, there will come from the design review board personnel different ideas or different approaches or different concepts or different ways to do something. And most of the time, the people that are there are happy to receive that and that's what they're going to go ahead with. So it does get down to some of the smaller details, you know? It's down to color at times.
Color landscaping, fixture selections, those types of things that are all the detail level items that complement the building itself.
Right. So we can't work in control of the form and so on, the size, because that's what decided in most of the situations, because it's an existing building. The question really is, is what's the right treatment for that building? And like I said, a lot of the times
We've seen a lot of
People right there are working their way at it. We have one, one of our great participants, Mark, who does sketches all the time. He'll do sketches of things. And then when they get done, they'll say, can we get a copy of that? And he'll say, well, absolutely. And they take the sketch and that's what they don't do because they've got more information and they've got some good ideas. And obviously, the good idea will probably went out over somebody's, you know, off-the-cuff idea. It is a case of getting down to the minutia of a project.
I was just going to add, and everybody might not be aware of this, but we do grow grants, what we call grow grants, which is facade improvements in our business districts, exterior improvements, and all those applications go through a design review. So with their picking, light fixtures and colors and door, you know, panels, you know, whatever.
Signs.
Yeah, everything that's outside the building, on the building, is subject to that type of review. So it'd still be part of that process.
So you wouldn't see that really changing that?
I don't think so.
And truthfully, that was my concern. I was like, well, let's let's see what the design board does, what the design guidelines are. So I thought they would very much be a complement to a form-based code. And it alleviates many necessarily to do some strict architectural standards, those kinds of things that are done in some form-based codes. So while we're talking about row houses, again, what we want to do is have some sort of commercial base downtown. So when I initially heard that row houses was something that some community members were seeking to do, I thought, how can we somehow give some sort of commercial emphasis, right? So the idea of a live-work unit occurred to me. So that's also in your packet. So a live-work unit potentially in the row house. And the thing that you'll, your next question is going to be is how does it differ than your home occupation, right? So for a live
Gotcha, Dave, didn't you?
So your existing home occupation standards, for example, you can't have any employees. Under live-work, you could have one. You can't have any signage for your home occupation. You could have a four-square-foot sign for a live-work unit. Your home occupation's saying no more than 25% of the floor area of your home. Live-work unit, it's 50%. So potentially, you could have, for example, you know, just right down the street from where this building is going up, these row houses. And it could be, you know, someone has their four-foot square-foot sign that says, you know, Mr. Smith CPA or whatever else, and then they live upstairs or they live behind or whatever. So you're giving the possibility that someone can both live and work in their row house. And potentially, as we move along to the rewrite process, you may decide that a live-work unit is something you want to allow someplace else besides your central business district. But that's a different question for a different time.
I guess that was my only, not my only concern. I guess one concern I had is that we define the live-work unit exclusively for the CBD unit, the CBD, and not the bigger, I think there's a bigger overall conversation of now, how many new employees did Fort Thomas gain in the past year because of COVID that are sitting at their house right now, working, that are not paying payroll tax?
We're still finding them.
I mean, I myself have debated when I'm going to switch. And our company now is, I mean, they're going through employee by employee saying, if you live here, do you want us to shift your payroll tax to X city? And this is thousands and thousands of jurisdictions across United States. So I'm not sure how the city's taking the approach of reminding its citizens that if you're now no longer commuting to wherever and you're sitting in your basement working most of the time, you owe us. And not wherever, not Cincinnati, not wherever. And so, you know, I think in terms of, not necessarily specific language in the zoning ordinance, but how we deal with that question of the live-work question, I think is something that we need to think about over the next year or through this process, I guess.
There's definitely trending, and a lot of it based off of COVID and the reality of people recognizing and companies recognizing the value of having employees remote versus renting square footage in a downtown area and paying large rent and potentially increased taxes and so forth. And they're starting to farm that out and recognize that certain aspects of their companies can function that way efficiently. We are getting those types of inquiries all the time. And they're usually based off the employer finding out how much they're paying for their employees to be taxed if they're not in their buildings. So that is happening through attrition, but it is a concerted effort that I think every jurisdiction is going to be faced with as we go forward.
Well, I mean, obviously, I think Fort Thomas is going to have a net positive compared to a lot of communities, but because you're not losing a lot of employees, you're gaining.
Correct.
But, you know, the whole question of the live-work thing and how, you know, if you have all these employees sitting at their house in a residential zone, do they have deliveries? Do they have, I mean, we kind of sort of have that now, but I mean, it's, I think the live-work unit is kind of part of that bigger conversation.
And it, you know, you just touched on something, you know? My first touch of zoning happened in 1985. And the home occupation licensing in Fort Thomas, not unlike most communities, was pretty strict. And it's similarly written today. But a lot of the issues that were discussed when people came to the city or we got complaints in neighborhoods was exactly what you just said. And now, that's the norm. If you're not driving down your street with a truck on your street, you know, that's unusual because it happens all day, every day. And it's just the way the world functions now. And that used to be the red flag or the alarm, like they're running a business out of there. UPS is showing up at their house every week, you know? Every week was a lot, you know? That means they were taking some kind of product or something in their house that made them a business and alarmed potentially the neighbors about what might be going on there. But I think that recognition in our zoning has to address that as well. It is different. Home occupations are not the same as they were before. And there's a lot more of them. And they can function in neighborhoods and not be a big issue. Because there's a lot of them out there that we don't know about. Which means that they're there and nobody recognizes they're there and neighbors are not being affected adversely by it. So they can function that way.
But I think from a, both from a zoning standpoint and just from a municipal taxation and ordinance standpoint, you make sure you're trying to capture that activity to the extent that you can.
The other interesting, to chase around for a second, about more people working from their homes to go into an office, is that we are seeing in certain places, and hopefully Fort Thomas will be one of them, where people, even if they're working in their home, you know, by 10 o'clock, they've got to get out. They've had three hours of Zoom calls and they're done, right? So they're going to be willing to walk up to Fort Thomas Coffee or to whatever else to just get an interaction with people and to get out of that Zoom meeting. So places that have struggled during the day to get commercial walk-in, depending upon how many people are now working from their home, are now actually seeing that they are getting, as people are feeling more comfortable with COVID, they're actually seeing more walk-in traffic during the day, as people want to get out of their office and out of Zoom meetings. So hopefully that will be something that as we, that fly is going to make us all cry.
I know. And if Pat over there follows us, I'm telling you.
When it went to Pat.
I know. I almost said, there he is over there. Then I was, it's coming your way.
That's right.
So
Why don't you hire us as consultants and then we'll show up unless you pay.
That's right.
So the third type of amendment that is in front of you is a multifamily dwelling with flex space. And so I was really challenged when Kevin and Ron said to me, you know, we want to allow, we think it might be, we've had these people who say, you know, we want this residential completely in downtown. And in my mind, I'm thinking, we really want for people to feel like these are businesses that are occupied and working and a part of our community and not just closed off from the street, right? We really don't want for people to feel like, oh, this is a residence, I can't walk by here. So I said, you know, what can we do that would allow potentially some multifamily but have that transparency on the first floor? And so I came up with this idea of a multifamily with flex space. And so the idea behind it is that initially, until you have a critical mass and commercial non-residential users feel more comfortable, what's up front on the street are conference rooms. The other thing that we're seeing as a result of COVID is people that are living in multifamily occasionally need to have a conference room space. So they would have a conference room space for people who live in the multifamily. Or they would have the coffee space that a lot of, that's a common area for many multifamily. All of that would be adjacent to the street. And then over time, if you get to the point where you could have commercial viability in that location, it could then convert to something that is non-residential, be it office or commercial, right? So the design standards that you see in here or the form standards that you see in here really do talk about transparency, require that flex space to be at the street, and then have a ceiling height, for example, so that at some point in time, it can be a retail space. And so when you look at the description and intent, that's what this multifamily with flex space is all about. Initially, you start off with multifamily on the first floor, but with those more active portions up adjacent to the street, over time, it could transition to something that is not residential on the first floor. So the design standard, the form standards that you see here are all about that. Again, dealing with minimum setbacks, dealing with a percentage of the façades right at the street, dealing with transparency, doing all of those kinds of things. So again, this is getting the residential downtown, getting some critical mass to support your commercial, and then over time, hopefully transitioning to something that is not residential. So we talked about three different types of uses and forms potentially in downtown as a result of these amendments. And I know it's a lot of numbers. Any questions?
I guess just more of a fundamental question is, what is the impetus behind the timing, I guess, of this, the head-up, the remainder of the regulations for the zoning code? Does it make sense to do a more comprehensive text amendment package through the whole thing or just do it as part of the ordinance update? Or is there a specific reason why you're doing this specific text amendment for the CBD now versus six months from now? I'm just curious.
Do you want to answer to that?
So what I understand is that there has been some interest from several property owners that would like to do a completely residential development in downtown. They are not sure whether or not it'll be row houses or whether it would be this sort of multifamily building. And because of that, we were asked to draft these terms, knowing that this is stepping our toe into the idea of a form-based code and then also hopefully giving you a little more comfort into doing something that is completely and then also hopefully giving you a little more comfort into doing something that is completely multifamily or completely residential, when that's something that's not in your code.
So there's somebody, so it's been driven from commercial.
There's multiple site locations that have been looked at, that we've had some conversation with, that, that are interested in this type of flexibility with their potential.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just kind of curious why we're doing this and not the bigger part of it.
Sure. And that's a fair question. And we talked about that a little bit. It's like, look, I, you know, I think, I think ideally you would just look at it holistically and do the whole tax, but we've got a long process to do that. The issue, you know, the issues that come forward with, from Kevin's chair is, you know, where are the roadblocks? What are the things that people are coming in and asking for that we can't address? And I lived that world for a long time too, and that's how we got to the CBD because before it was so stringent that you couldn't really do anything in our business districts, existing buildings. Couldn't add on because you couldn't add parking. You couldn't do change signings because of the way the ordinances were written. So what we're feeling is we, we developed a community plan. There was a lot of discussion and a lot of public conversation about what it all means. A lot of conversation about form-based codes. It's reflected in the community plan. The people that do that for a living are looking at it and saying, that's, that's how I could accomplish anything in a community like this. And so the tools aren't there by a zoning standard to do all those things. They're identified in the community plan. And some of the properties are very specific about where those might be. So they're, they're ready to move forward.
Okay. Like I said, I was just more curious.
And so the question for the community and the question for the planning commission is, you know, how much of this are we willing to put in our code to even consider that? But it doesn't really matter whether it's now or six months from now or 18 months from now. It, it, those are the decisions we have to make as a community.
There are some conflicts not doing it holistically because we have parking requirements for apartments. So that adds one or like it's one and a half spaces for a one unit. One bedroom unit and two spaces for a two bedroom unit. And now we've got apartments here that we only have a one parking space requirement for. So I mean, maybe that's just an isolated case and it won't be happening a lot, but, you know, they have different parking requirements for different, the same use in different zones. Cause costs and problems down the road.
I guess that's my, well, that's my primary concern is we kind of do this kind of at the onset here. And like I said, I'm not totally against it one way or the other. It's just for that very reason, as we get into the rest of the discussion for the rest of it, maybe we decide to change our mine or go a different direction on something or the other. And then kind of wish we wouldn't have done that tax amendment, you know, six months ago. Regret it afterward, I guess. That's, that's what I'm concerned.
Yeah. And I think there's two ways to approach that. One is if you're comfortable with what you've done and the reasons you've done it, it should be standalone because you're dealing with your business district areas. And so if you had a truly commercial or a truly multifamily development, it would still follow the guidelines that are in that zone. No differently than it does today, really. And if you found those issues to be true and you had adopted this type of language, when you do your entire tax provision and you adopt it more as a full text, you could make modifications to that. If there's conflicting pieces.
And truthfully, there are two key decisions here, right? Are you comfortable with these changes, right? Cause that's a huge policy change to go from not allowing residential on the first floor and then to allow it in this way. And then are you comfortable with these numbers? So I'm happy to help you talk about the benefits and the detriments potentially to making this large policy choice. The numbers themselves, you know, we got to the numbers based upon your existing conditions in terms of your lots and your environmental constraints. I spent a fair amount of time studying GIS. And then looking at what makes sense for these types of particular forms and uses. But my personal belief is that zoning ordinance is a living and breathing documents, right? So as Ron said, six months from now is where we write the whole code and decide some of these are wrong, we change them. You know, if you said to me the next time I talk to you about these particular things, you know what? You have regulated too much. That's legitimate. And then when we do the whole code, we might legislate more or less, right? But this is in some ways the two very big choices. First, the policy choice and then the numbers. So my first question to you is, overall, do you have any questions about what we talked about in terms of these particular amendments? Both in terms of the policy choice and then the numbers in terms of what we're regulating and how we're regulating them? And I'm going to assume that you've all read them. We don't need to go through each individual standard here.
Are we looking at a big wide angle view or are we looking at some detail? I had some questions just on the details of this. Is that too soon to talk about that?
I will leave that to Kat.
I mean, I, I think absolutely. Let's, let's bring him out. Do you have the details?
Let me talk about maybe a higher over you first. Like do you, do you have, I like the idea a lot. I mean, I agree that I think it's for your CBD to survive in these businesses that are coming in and taking a chance on Fort Thomas, that it's helpful to have some critical mass of people living close to them that walk there. I don't know, but you kept bringing up the, the one example in the midway where you've got storefront apartments right now. And so if that building comes down, are you saying that you could theoretically put row houses right there? As opposed to kind of tacking it onto the edge of the business district where we kind of step it from a more intense business use down to higher density residential and then houses? Or are you saying kind of mix them all together possibly?
So as this is currently drafted, I'll be really honest with you. You could potentially tear that down and put three row houses there. I think that that probably would not happen in that particular site. But from a development standpoint, I just don't think that's, that's worthwhile, given the width of that site, the depth of it and the, the topography that's there. However, you know, as you get to the central business district and you're moving back on the other side toward the high school, then there are potentially some places for row houses there. When we look at a larger picture of this, when you start talking about building types with for a form-based code, you typically will say, we think they're appropriate in this district or this, that sub-district, for example. And so in this particular row, we would probably say that row houses, as we do the whole code, are not appropriate there, but they would be appropriated in these particular locations. For example, everything that you're talking about. So one of the changes that could be made to this is, for example, we would just say that it's only applicable, you know, in the central business district and not in Midway. I mean, that could be one way to differentiate right now. Because as these are drafted, the row houses, the live work units and the multifamily with flex space will be permitted in either one of those places because it's the central business district.
Because they're identified the same.
Because they're identified.
Do we run the risk of our central business district, which is business district supposedly becoming all residential? The one problem we have for Thomas to me is people don't rush to Fort Thomas to shop. And we've seen a lot of businesses turn over and go away because they weren't the right businesses in the location in town. Something just don't make a lot of sense to me anyway. So if we let them build too much residential, are we squeezing the business out? There won't be any business. Supposed to kind of where we are now, or at least business on the first level or the opportunity for it and residential above. You know, our biggest project going on, our biggest project going on now is business on the bottom, residential on top.
So.
At one time I thought, you know, we would do that kind of through. I mean, I could see the show building become apartments, maybe in this scenario.
Right.
Do we want that to happen? Or then we go, like business opportunities gone away.
Right. And I apologize. I don't know where the show building is, but, um, so that's the key question, right? Are you risking it? I'm going to be honest with you. You do not have, either within a walking distance or within a reasonable sort of driving district, enough critical mass of residential to support much more commercial than what you have today. So you, that's just the reality of that. And unfortunately, if you're leaving it completely to the market, until you get that critical mass, commercial is not going to locate here. And if it does locate here, it's going to be exactly what you said. It's going to be a revolving door. So you have somewhat of a chicken and an egg problem. Let's just be really honest about it, right? So what you need to do, in my opinion, is what you've done. You have, you know, Fort Thomas Coffee, all of that there. And you have the, the new building that you have coming in. And then you're going to need to support it with some fairly dense retail, I mean, some fairly dense residential. And that's what this does. But you do not want to create a situation where someone builds a multifamily building that can never, ever, ever be anything but multifamily. Because at some point in time, if you have enough critical mass of residential within walking distance or within biking distance or within scooting distance or whatever it is, you'll then have the ability to support it. So that is why I did develop multifamily with flex space.
And to answer your question about the 18 north building, it could be residential today. On the, on the upper levels.
Right. That's what I'm saying. But if we, if it were residential 100%, it takes away the stuff that's in there.
And where is that? I'm sorry.
Colonel D is. Yeah, it's across from the bank building that's next to the one that's under construction.
Oh, okay.
And it's an old theater building.
Oh, okay.
And it has multiple business uses in it.
So if you're, what I would typically advise you to do is to say, this is our core, right? Like where the new building is, that's our core. And this is where maybe if you were really concerned about it, that's the only place that you will have residential on the first floor. And then you could move further out and perhaps do these other things. But I think for the time being, that what we're proposing works.
I mean, our central business district doesn't span that long a distance.
Exactly, exactly.
So what I'm saying, why do we leave it like it is?
Because I think you're not going to, the parcels that.
Everything outside of it residential.
The parcels that are potentially looking at redevelopment are probably not going to redevelop with retail on the first floor because no one can get anyone to use the space. Because there's just not enough critical mass of residential in the area. And because let's be honest about it, you don't have anything within your central business district that's going to bring people here from, you know, Newport or Covington or, or anything like that. So your niche for the time being is going to be creating retail that people that live in Fort Thomas want to come to. And that may very well be a different sort of retail in Midway than it is in downtown.
You, you mentioned the critical mass necessary to sustain businesses or bring businesses. With how Fort Thomas is already built up, I mean, where, where does that critical mass come? I mean, is the only place we've got left in the central business district to, you know, redevelop some of the businesses into residential now? Or where do you see that coming within the walking distance or whatever of our businesses?
So think about downtown. You have, as you are like where the bank building is and those, and those single family homes between the bank and, and yeah. So that's a place where redevelopment could happen. If you look on the other side of the street where you have an interesting development pattern, you had single family homes there at one point and someone stuck a retail space on the front of it, which is interesting. It doesn't happen, that doesn't happen in many places to the level that it's happened here. Truthfully, all of that could come down, right? All of those single family homes with that one story retail that's sitting on the first floor and have, you know, retail and residential and bring critical mass in. But yes, it is going to be a tear down and rebuilt.
Seems like the issue with first floor residential is security and privacy, especially when we have, you know, requirements for penetration there on the, you know, single family. Talk about that in a minute. And how does that work that people are okay with other folks looking in their windows when they walk by?
So it's interesting. So if you'll notice, if it's the multifamily with flex space, we're saying straight up on the street because no one is living there. But if it's the row house, basically it's a 10 foot setback from the back of the sidewalk. And people, as long as you elevate that, because you'll notice the standards require it to be elevated, people are comfortable with living there. Take some opportunities and sort of walks in the streets and around Newport and you will see, you know, cheap by job right at the sidewalk, people with their, with single family detached and townhouses. If you have an area where people are comfortable and they want to walk and there are parks and there are plazas and there are those kinds of things, yes, they are comfortable with it. If you have that about 10 feet worth of setback and you elevate the first floor.
I'm not arguing with you, but if, if it's 18 inches off the ground and it's now a commercial establishment, you need to provide a handicapped accessible entrance, which is 18 via the ramp, which is kind of difficult to do.
So we're, let's talk about two different things, right? We're talking about the multifamily with flex space, which is going to have to be flush, right? Because it may at some point be, you know, a retail space, you're going to have to be able to be ADA accessible. If it's a live work unit, then not necessarily do you have to necessarily meet all of those.
If it's owner occupied, if it's a rental, then it would have to be accessible.
But it is.
So I mean, it could, there could be some issues there.
But it's for live work, the owner needs to live there.
That.
It's part of the live work standards.
So we would not have any rental units in there that, that would be live work.
Correct.
10 bucks to whoever kills this flock.
I mean, I always thought that our CBD, it's, one of the problems that we've had is there's been a lot of structures that really weren't appropriate for businesses and then it was really stretched out. And so we would have, you know, the pizza place, a public house, empty building, bank. Then you have a couple of offices and you'd have somebody that'd go into a building down here, try to put a restaurant in there. I don't remember what the restaurant is. Remember you would sit on the front lawn for a while and stuff like that. And so it just feels like we don't, like we should squish everything together that's business-y and then have more people living closer to that. That just feels like good planning to me in the way that you have a vibrant area that can survive. But, so and I'm only saying that, Dan, because you said something about like what's wrong with the way it is right now. It's like, you know, somebody could theoretically, you know, go almost all the way down to, was it Fifth Third, I guess, and open up a, a business there that depends on walk-in traffic. And I feel like it then is so separated from all the rest of the businesses. Traditionally, those types of businesses had trouble surviving.
Well, yeah, we know we had the restaurants and they don't want to walk from behind the bank parking or behind the dinner parking that far. They want to park on the side, which is impossible in this place.
So could you just remind me, what is the, what are the limits of the CBD zone now?
Basically from the post office to the city building.
So it doesn't extend all the way to Edinburg?
No.
No.
No, it's not.
Okay. Because the, I mean, the flip side of that is, like you were saying, keep the business-y business. But then if you want to densify, then you permit row houses all the way down to Edinburg. We're really talking about increasing population.
Increasing density.
The only way we can.
Right. And that's what I'm saying.
Is to, yeah, is to.
Increase density.
Yeah. Right. And it doesn't have to be strictly just the CBD, the adjacency of going down Island Avenue, going down South Fort Thomas Avenue. Do you allow more densification for the surrounding residential that's not technically CBD zone?
And we may, I think we'll get to that point as we start talking about.
Right. And that's, again, part parcel, why, why are we doing this separately from the rest? And, and like I said, I'm not one way or the other. I just, you know, it seems like we're pulling this out of the bigger context of what we're talking about, so.
What's population density where we're at compared to like Bellevue? And do you, are you familiar with Bellevue?
I'm slightly familiar with Bellevue. I spent a fair amount of time in Newport. It is significantly less, for example, than, than for example, what surrounds Monmouth in Newport. Your density is significantly less.
Okay. Got it. It just seems to me like we've got a lot of people around there and it wouldn't be that hard to walk from Highland or Miller or wherever. As opposed to like, I look at Bellevue and they've got a lot of stuff going on. It doesn't seem like they have that many people, that many more people that would be able to walk to where they're at or get there easily. I don't.
But they have more housing units because there's lots smaller lots.
Okay. Got you. Easier to get in and out of there though too. Okay. From the city, from cities.
Right. Their accessibility is better.
Their accessibility is better, but they do have very smaller lots, you know? So on a broad policy level, for all of CBD, both Midway and downtown, are you comfortable with these amendments? Yes or no?
I was in downtown. I wouldn't say it differently.
Okay.
Now, when you talk about Midway, you need to also define what is Midway because it, it technically, I think by zoning runs all the way up to Grandview.
Grandview through the Armory.
Right.
Building.
I mean, I know that there were some people at one time. I mean, I know that there were some people, at one time, that were talking about the invisible fence building, between that and then the building we just approved for the tap room, it's got these row, old kind of like row houses on that are, theoretically, that could be something, like what we're talking about here. So you, so this, a lot of this doesn't make a lot of sense for that, that one block in the Midway, where pizza, you know, everything that's, if you go down a little bit further, it might make more sense if you put a bunch of row houses or live work or something like that in that one particular block or, and so, I don't know if it-
Yeah, I mean, that's why, I guess the bigger picture is, do the zoning districts themselves need to be modified, the limits of those?
Ultimately, they probably will.
Or create an adjacent, an adjacent-
Transition zone in some sense.
Yes, right, exactly. And I think that will ultimately happen as a result of the rewrite or the, the update. But we are looking at these amendments right now as a result of particular property owners who've come in. All of them in the central business district, not in Midway. If I'm correct.
That's crazy. I might just be a sore loser because I was the only no vote on the thing in the middle of town, but the fifty feet and four stories just seems awfully tall to me for the CBD. And that's the way it's written right now, but nobody has ever, nobody until now actually, you know, built that big. And it's big, I mean, it really is big. So, I mean, that's why my concern is number wise. And are you, are we all happy with that? Or, or do you think it's a little extreme?
The public building is taller than that. The, the apartment down there on Edinburg is taller than four floors.
Oh, yeah. It's like six stories.
Well, but you're also putting these within, you know, how far back from the, from the streets are you creating a canyon in there?
I don't have time for the four floors myself.
Well, the, the, your rideaway is pretty wide, and even if you had a four story building on both sides, you would not get a canyon, because the rideaway is pretty wide in there.
And quite frankly, in our world, in Fort Thomas, it's tall and it's, it's big, but drive down any other, drive down Monmouth Street, and all the buildings are that size. Or blocks.
Yeah, it looks a lot like a lot of other places in Cincinnati or whatever you drive, there, you get that same feel. I don't think it's too big.
There's a lot of areas in Covington and Newport and other urban areas that have structure sizes that are consistently that big.
But it is a change, right? I mean, you are seeing a, a very, fairly large change with what's going up as opposed to what you're, you currently have.
I guess my, my, my base concern with the time, not, the one concern I have with timing is, we do set a public meeting or a public hearing next month, the question's gonna come up from somebody, I would presume anyway, that, okay, why are we doing this? What, what's, you know, what's driving this? And then if we come back with, well, there's some developers that really want to do this, then you're like, you know, then you're on the hook for the public, like, well, you're just kowtowing to a developer that wants to come in here and do something that we don't maybe necessarily want to do. Whereas if we say, well, it's, you know, if it is, even the month after or six months down the road, at least you say, well, this is part of a bigger overall.
I mean, I don't know. I think that's with any text amendment, there, there's a, the reason-
Right, but we're initiating it in this case.
Well, I, any text amendment, we initiate.
Well, yeah.
And, and the reason we initiate those is because opposed to approach us, so that's my only thought is that, that's why, that's why it came up, and this, this is kind of a lead in to that change.
I mean, if this was a standalone thing, then it is what it is. I guess that's my concern though, is if we're just, well, we're doing this now, but we're gonna do everything else next year because of developer, then it's like, well, why are you rushing it?
Well, and when we've done the tax amendments in the recent past, it always has been for a specific use or something else.
It was a standalone thing.
Yeah, and so I don't know, I mean, and maybe we do that if, if somebody wants to ask for this, if we know who the developers are, and they say, here's our property, we wanna, we wanna redevelop this way and do that, I agree, I think that might be a little more transparent and, and, you know, give, you know, the public then has more input into what's going on with that when they see a, a specific development involved.
I think we should even talk about it being developed, driven. We're, I mean, our business community is dying. It hasn't changed at all in, in fifty years. And the new tenants in, in the new building are just ones we pulled from exist, we're not getting new businesses in town. And, you know, I'm not saying the city is dying or anything, but something needs to change if we're gonna, if we're gonna, if Fort Thomas is gonna improve, you know, it just, I think that, that really, in my opinion, is why we should be looking for this, because we can't go on the way we are with little houses that we've converted into, you know, three person offices and expect the community to thrive. I think we've put a lot of money in the city building, put a lot of money into the parks, the schools, you know, we've got a great community, but we've got a lousy business community that just, you know.
Our bigger problem is you can drive ten minutes to any of this.
Yeah, our biggest, our, our biggest employer is at St. Luke and more of it. I think we don't have strong businesses. And I think really, a good, healthy community should have a health business.
Yes, and ours, ours is always gonna be a little different than some of our neighbors because we are not a driven path for any other reason. If you're in Fort Thomas, you're here for a specific reason, you live here, work here, or, or attend here for a different reason. You're not gonna drive through, you're not, Fort Mitchell, where you're gonna drive down Dixie, or a lot of those county, county cities over there that are similar in size to us, so you're not going to literally come here. So we have to support, our business district has to be supported by the people that live here, and the density is the conversation. And to your point, it's not, the transparency part is, is a legitimate question, but technically, anytime you do a text amendment, it, by statute, it has to be initiated by the planning commission or by the council. So an individual resident doesn't really, or, or a potential developer isn't technically the, the applicant on request. The question is, if you're, if you're comfortable with this or not, is it part of what you want in the updated zoning? And that's really the issue. Is this how we want our city to move forward? And whether it's a developer of a particular property or multiple properties, if the tool's not there, they're not gonna ask the question. They can't, so, and that's, that's why it's in front of you now. They can't ask the question, because it doesn't allow, it doesn't allow it.
But, but what we're doing here is, is really changing the central business district to residential. I mean, people come to Fort Thomas because of the schools, they wanna live there. And to your point, Dan, I mean, yeah, you drive to Newport, you find anything you want, you know, you're ten minutes down the road. So, I mean, it is one of our, I mean, it's what we're really trying to do, is lessen what the central business district is, you know, and, and allow for, you know, straight residential in there.
Well, I liked what Jerry said was, because I try to run to these people all day long, you know, and so it is tough, tough to get a resident, or tough to get a tenant in here. And then when they start, when you know they're gonna be dumping tens of thousands of dollars of their money into their space, you know, because Fort Thomas is such an awesome place, it's, it's almost a, it's like I have this moral dilemma inside, I'd be like, oh shit, I hope this survives, you know, so. And so I feel, I agree that a, what I, so Lee and I, so my wife and I are considering, one of the things we're considering now is we're becoming empty nasters, is we are considering moving to more, like a Mount Apes or something like that, we have tons of little, little things you can go. And I think that that is part of what communities have evolved into, is to become, instead, to be, to stay competitive is this attractive walking ability, you know, stuff you can do around town. And so if you can't, if your businesses can't survive, then people are going to, lose people like me and Lee because we want, we want that. Not that, but a lot of people moved to Fort Thomas because we have great schools, and so it doesn't really matter if I leave because somebody will buy my house and, you know, you have local kids in all towns.
You're definitely still in school.
So, but, but I just feel like, if we're gonna have a business district, we might as well as every room, we can't make it a great business district, you know, and so.
I'll, I'll just add a couple of other things, you'll quit off the conversation a little bit. You know, one is, I think the, you, you made the reference of the businesses moving in, and the community plan addressed that. What it said is, we don't have any modern, up to date retail space, and Dan could attest to this, I'm sure, where you can meet all the accessibility standards, expand your business and grow your business, and stay in the community where you want to be. We just don't have it to offer. And that's really what One Highland has provided, and that's what you're seeing, you're seeing people migrate to that for that reason. The spaces they're vacating struggle with the same aspects that you're talking about. They come in, they try to retrofit, can they fit? How much investment do they make? The central business district more as a whole, I've, I've been using this analogy a lot, but I'll use it again. And I've been using it in reference to the city building with our employees and everything else. And, you know, any project is, is kind of like that, that crest of a roller coaster where you're going up. And right now, nothing's completed, and it's kind of a climb. Everything's a climb, and it's not finished, and you, it's hard to visualize the, the fun aspect of it until you crest that and you start going down the other side, and things start to come together. And the CBD is a little bit like that. The city building and One Highland are gonna anchor our central business district, they are. The city building is going to be much more vibrant, it's going to offer more public access, meeting rooms, and then the city, when I say the city, the staff, the council is committed to trying to create a space. And it may not, it, it may not be everything that everybody hoped, but for the businesses that are invested there, and the ones that are new there, including the use of the city building, we're looking at all the other aspects of public parking, wayfinding, sense of place, investment in the public spaces, activities that are, that are designed to be there, so that when you do walk past, it's more, or if you do live near there, there's something that's going on there. And that's what people like, they like to see movement, they like to be able to walk and get to other places. We've talked about the mobility of it, from electric cars to possible, you know, bike lanes, a number of things that would lend to people being able to be in our central business district, that's probably still gonna be mostly our residents. How far does that expand and how much commercial can it support? It's probably still fairly limited, but it comes back to how many people. I can tell you that Fort Thomas Coffee will prosper with the more people that they have in close proximity to where they are, because that's who goes there now. And, and it has changed. It changed because of COVID, it changed because some people were at home, and it changed for the way that you described it. People were working from home, or they're, and they're saying, I got, I gotta get out of this place, and I'm gonna go up the street because it's close, and I can get there and walk up there, ride my bike there, and, you know, or drive my car apart there, but it's not very far. I don't wanna go down to Starbucks or somewhere else outside the city because it's right here in my city. We need to be very intentional about the types of businesses that we're pulling in there, and that's part of what we're doing. It all sounds great, and, and I, I think that we'll accomplish a lot of that, and, and it'll be in the effort and the details of when this comes together. But when it starts going down the other side of the hill and things start to come together, that momentum will build on itself in some ways. And the fact that we have some, some new spaces helps, the fact that we're intentional about what we're doing like this will help. And it's gonna take every little piece to come together for it to be everything that everybody hopes it could be.
Well, it's, it's very eerie that Ron and I met, I don't know, two months ago?
Yeah.
And we used to always be on the same page. So, cause, and I'll just, so I'll just echo what he was gonna say. Your downtown doesn't always have to be anchored by your retail. It is that sense of place and that intentionality, and you can create that absent these things. You can do it with food trucks, you can do it with your public parks, you can do it with pop-up events, you can do it with pop-up stores, you can do it in all different ways to create that sense of place and, and place where people want to be, as long as you have that intentionality. And then low and behold, that food truck gets so popular, it goes into that multifamily with flex space. Or that, you know, pop-up event at that plaza that's really not well activated right now at downtown, suddenly gets activated by your intentionality, and that pop-up, your retail person there ends up at One Highland. But it is, you know, you're doing this, and you have to create all of those things to hopefully build both the residential base as well as the critical mass of things that people want to do, whether it's concerts or food trucks, or, you know, hopscotch events on that park plaza or whatever else, that will bring people downtown, and then you can grow your retail.
So there's a lot of strategy underlying this whole effort, and, you know, there's, stick around, there's more to come. But no, I mean, there's a lot of work being done from our end to try to create the place. The housing or the buildings or the structures are only a part of it. But this town walks, it's mobile, and would love to be able to go near home and be at a place. I, I believe that, I've lived here my whole life. But our central business district cannot work downtown for thirty-five years in the city building when we lock the front door. This is what I said with council when we talked about the city building. The front door literally locks at four thirty. By the time I leave, there's tumbleweeds rolling down, because there are no businesses open. There's nothing open after five o'clock, which is a number one thing. You gotta have businesses open after five o'clock, and there has to be multiple businesses. And that's all part of the intention to create the space. The, the plaza that's there, that we invested in, I know you, you're familiar with that, has never been fully utilized. That has to change, that those spaces had to become vital in, in the middle of our town, so that when people go by or drive by, it feels like something's going on. And that doesn't happen by accident all the time, and we just had to be more intentional about it. We're right here, again, it's hard to pull that off. I mean, we're talking about, you know, our events that we traditionally do, and even the holiday walk, it's like, how do you do the holiday walk in the middle of Fort Thomas this, you know, December, when the city building's the way it is and One Highland's the way that it is, you know what I mean? But on the back end of that, there's a lot of potential there, as some of these things start to come circle. Anyway, I know I've said a lot, but there's, there's a lot more to it, and, and timing is, is part of it. So, you know, to your point, ideally, I mean, if you, if you, if you're comfortable with it and it's the direction you're gonna go, it shouldn't really matter whether it's today or six months from now or a year from now.
I just feel like, well, first of all, this has to be, there's a lot of people through that One Highland process that felt like this wasn't, that our methods of notifying them of what's going on were not very clear, were transparent, and, and so somehow that has to change it. And I just feel like this is gonna be, this is gonna really stir up a lot of stuff that, after what was not long, that long ago, a pretty painful process, and so I just, uh-
So that's why you're in downtown.
Huh? So, I mean, it's, I can imagine what's gonna happen is that, based on some of the comments is that, it's, so, I, so like, I believe, like, I don't have anything to do with any of this, because everybody's wondering, I don't, you know, I'm assuming I know who the developer is, but, but.
And I'll, I'll clear that, there's, there's more than one location and more than one developer that have expressed this type of interest, so.
Okay, so what I can imagine is gonna happen is there, is, is we're gonna do our best to make sure people are aware of it, they're gonna come in, and then they're gonna say, you're gonna rip down more buildings again, aren't you? And then that's gonna stir up all kinds of stuff, you know, and so, uh, I just wanna, and so I do feel like this is the right thing to do, and we have to have enough guts to, whether that's for one, but it's gonna, I feel like it's just gonna be not that pleasant.
Yeah, I guess my viewpoint on it is, to me anyway, I, I, and this is the way our text amendment, just the way the statute works, is we come in with the language and say yes or no. In my mind, it seems to me it would be worth having a public hearing to give you, to have an opportunity for you to present this presentation and say, citizens of Fort Thomas, this is what our recommendations are, what do you think? Before we come and say, we're just gonna do a text amendment. Just to, just to get the whole higher level, these are things we're considering, changing in our code, what do you think about, you know, change, like a public hearing for changes to the CBD zoning ordinance, but not necessarily coming to them and say, well, this is what we came up with, what do you think? Because to Dan's point, they're gonna say, well, you guys just worked with a developer, you figured this all out, you didn't tell us, and now you're voting on it, we didn't have a say. To me, I think from that public perspective standpoint, it's worth having a public meeting, inviting people to comment, and then coming up with a text amendment. That's my personal opinion. But I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with this per se, I just think from a process standpoint, I'd rather get buy-in before we come to the, before we set a hearing and say, this is what we're gonna do.
We did survey the place. Minimal surveys, I think. Out of mandatory life. So, you know, what do you like in your city? What do you want? What's important?
When we did our last comprehensive plan though, I think we said, central business district, retail on the first floor, and, you know, residential above.
Right.
So, I mean, we're going from change from that from two years ago, and, you know, we, we had public, you know, law- we, we had public, you know, lots of public input in that whole process. So, you know, Dave, I agree with what you said. I think, you know, I, I think I'd like to have more public input before we just give them, you know, here's the, yeah, here's the wording that we think you should do, but get a little bit more input from people. And I don't know that we'll get it.
But at least you gave them an opportunity.
Yeah.
I think we got a lot of people that are, you know, we're supposed to be a bedroom community, single family, but most people think we have more multifamily structures than you think when you look around.
Sure, sure.
We're seeing rehab, painting them all like crazy. If you were gonna tell them you're gonna build another residential building in the middle of the city, that's all it's gonna be, I think you'd have an outrage because it's another multifamily building.
And you're putting it in the, in the business.
You put it in the central business district like I started with.
I understand everything you're saying.
I think that the One Highland is gonna be, for five years, that's gonna be the one that tells us what's next, unfortunately.
That's a, that's a simple, a more simplistic statement than, than technically what this says. You're saying it's a multifamily building in the middle of town, but it's flex space, it's townhouses. It's not, it's not a multifamily. It's not like building an apartment like Gettysburg or something in the middle of town. It's not a multifamily building. It's a different style of structure, building that's adaptable and has multiple use potential in it. But the reality is, it's gonna start as a multifamily, you know, might have 13-foot ceilings on the first floor, but I mean, you're gonna have apartments on the first floor.
But I guess all I'm saying is unless there's some critical factor that we couldn't wait a month or, I'm not saying delay this forever. I'm just saying, get another month or two into this process, give an opportunity for feedback on changes to the CBD before we provide specific language. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
I need some clarification. Is this the residential we're talking about? Is that row houses or is that anything? I mean, if you want to put a 12-unit apartment building in there, can you do that? I mean, when we talk multifamily, everyone thinks apartments. But you think townhouses, you think upper, upper and upper scale kind of, kind of residential? I think the.
Yeah, I was thinking you could build One Highland with residential units on the bottom.
Are we talking?
And I wouldn't want to.
We're definitely talking any kind of multifamily.
So what's.
Well condos.
What's proposed in front of you would be either the row houses?
Yeah.
Or the multifamily with flex space. Not anything besides that. And it would have to meet all the standards that are here. So it could not look like Gettysburg or whatever else. And I would say that the, the community plan does talk about allowing some free-standing residential buildings in downtown to provide some of that critical mass. And it talks about both, both the retail on the first floor and some free-standing residential buildings.
To your point, if you think it's built without business space in the bottom, it'll never convert in my mind.
I don't think so either, but I mean, you got possibility of it if you, if you built the building, you know, by these standards though. But.
You have the possibility of it. And then think about this. I mean, you've all been in places other than Fort Thomas and you're walking down central business districts. And whether it's a hotel or a really nice multifamily space, it really does continue the character and the transparency that makes you want to look in and say, you know, who's checking in at the front desk? And, you know, what's going on here? What's going on there? As opposed to, you know, those multifamily structures that are all closed up. And so as long as we create a form that is open and inviting, it's not creating the hole that we were talking about. Which is, you know, you have two separate issues, right? One, you have the idea of retail. The other is you have a, a street character that people feel comfortable walking along. So you can certainly create the character and then we can create the ability to have retail at some point in time in the future if it becomes multifamily with flex space. If it ends up being row houses, you're still creating interest in the street because as you're walking down the street, just imagine being someplace else. Imagine being in Newport, for example, or wherever else. All of a sudden, it becomes a very pleasant walk where you're walking along the street and this person has Begonias and this person has the University of Kentucky flag and this person has UGA flag and this person has, you know, their kids' toys on the front lawn. Or today I was out walking and it was a very short setback and people had put their little kids' table and the kids were out playing, you know? They were having a playdate in the front yard. All of those things go to creating a sense of place. And all we're doing with these amendments is creating that place.
I'm supportive of this, but I kind of agree with David that if we, if we don't sell it to the public, it's just gonna look like we're ramming down the roads. I think it'd be really nice to have a meeting where we go through this with any concern citizens and get their feedback. So, so we're listening to them. The planning process we went through a couple of years ago, I know it said we need to do something with the CBD. What, did it, were there specifics about that? Did it just say improve, we need improvements in the central business district? Or did, was it more specific than that?
No, there's more specifics.
I think it specifically refers to increasing the density, doesn't it?
Yeah, there's discussion of density. There's some, there's some pullout pieces to give example of that.
So this would definitely be supported.
Yeah. I mean, we've talked a lot about, we've talked a lot about some of the areas on the core, but you know, the, the town center is another area that is always of conversation and discussion. That first block. And I think that was a pullout area. So.
What do you think about that process that they're talking about, which is some kind of public input?
I, I mean, I'm, it's, that's the pleasure of the commission. It's your, it's your process. I'm not, I'm not trying to force anything on you. So please don't misinterpret that. I'm just giving you the reasons why we're here. We're here because the money has asked at a couple of locations. If this tool's not there, it's not there. It's not there today. So if it's ever offered to them, then they would have to wait for it. But, you know, the process itself, understanding our public, it's never a bad thing to give information out there to the whole transparency thing. I have no problem with that. I think unless you're specific about a site, you're probably not gonna get a lot of people involved.
Counsel, do you have any thoughts on, you know, you say you had somebody that's at least thinking about this as counsel, then devise it out. Have they popped up or said anything?
Starts here.
See, maybe it'll, you don't want to tell us what that is.
They would see it all. They could, they would have to make a decision because for a text amendment, it's a recommendation. So, I mean, they would have to have the, the same vision, you know, and, and see it the same way if it comes before them.
I did have a question about the multifamily flex space. When you originally talked about it, you mentioned conference or office space on the first floor.
Right.
Is that the intention of where we begin? So that the first floor with all that transparency, we're not looking into so much home. We're looking into a shared communal space.
Correct.
And then with units on top.
Correct.
Much like what we already have down there. Businesses on the bottom, residents on top.
Correct.
Then how much transparency you can set with the front?
It varies depending upon the row house or the multifamily with flex space. And the multifamily with flex space, let's see. And I apologize, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. 65%.
65%. It feels like people are more, they get more upset about the fact that we're ripping down buildings and they are not specifically what they're gonna be in place with. I mean, they, they, you know, a lot of the residents along with you, Jerry, were concerned about the height of this. They wanted the massiveness and things like that of it. But what stirred a lot of people up was it, do you feel like it was more of the, the fact that we ripped down buildings or the fact that we put something in that was so big?
No one leaves Fort Thomas. So they think, well, that's the house that the Simpsons used to live in. I went to school with their daughter. And, you know, it's not necessarily the building itself. It's the nostalgia and, you know.
The identification that way. I'll, I'll tell you a funny story about that because I can't help it. One of the people from Woodland, whose last name starts with S, asked me to get the S that was on the, that was on the chimney for when it sits in town. So they opposed the project until it was being torn down and then they wanted the S.
There's nothing terribly, terribly significant actually other than the, the Masonic Lodge. That's a goofy building. You know, it's just a fun building to look at. But the rest of those, there's, there's really nothing. I mean, I think it's more your, your change in our town.
Sure, sure. And that was a big step. The One Highland was a big step for our community to understand that change, to effectuate that type of change, it's going to be altered in a big way. Area, Marhaus often refers to, think of, try to think of another city where you drive through and it's all residential on one side and the business district's only on one side of the street. Because it doesn't really exist anywhere. Really, when you think about our town, other than a couple of banks, the BB and T building, the lodge and the third bank that was built in 87, that's the only thing that's on that side of the street that was, that was part of the business district. And everything else was in the houses that are there. And, you know, some of the area that we've referred to tonight is, you know, if, if you're not going in this direction, then you're marrying yourself to what we already have. And that, and the people that said they don't want the Simpson House torn down are not gonna buy the house on the avenue. Right? There's one, 10 moments old building is for sale and nobody's bought it. Dave Rawlings is building up and nobody's gonna buy it for a house. And so their option is to buy it for some type of business. And there's only a few types of businesses that would fit there. And would those same businesses fit in flex space or, you know, if it's dwelling where you're living there?
Houses make really bad offices. I mean, we've converted some of, but, you know, it's, they don't work. If you want a vibrant office building, you need to build this here.
So, yeah. Yeah. The square foot cost, when you do those cost ratios and people in Covington that, in those old houses will tell you, and I know Roger Peter's gonna pay that comment. Like I, we moved from an old house in Covington and moved to River Center. And you would think because of the rent structure that we were paying a lot more, but we had fully efficient use of our space. In a house, we had so much wasted space, square footage-wise, it, it actually balanced. Because you're paying for a lot of square footage you can't use in a converted residence.
I think that survey would get supported on the One Highland decision to do it.
I mean, you're, a lot of what's in the, I mean, what's in the community plan was representative of what the community asked.
Survey kind of pushed part of it.
Maybe not all the particulars, or maybe after, after it's all put in front of you and it's real, then maybe it was more than what people were comfortable with. And I get all of that. But it, it was what they were saying. And, and I'll share, I had a conversation with, with somebody in the community that, that was not a proponent of One Highland after the decision was made and talked about, you know, what, what have we done there? And, and why have we done it? And so I cut down to some of the basic math of where we got to, right? So if you look at our community plan, and that's our guiding principle document, it, the, the number one thing in our central business district that was identified as a weakness was parking, public parking and availability of parking. And the number one potential threat was doing nothing. So that's what you were faced with, right? So if we embraced those two things together and say, let's buy the buildings that are affected that, that became part of One Highland. If you bought those buildings at market value, and really I put the numbers just off of PVA value, which is really not market value, and tore them down and developed the space to put a parking lot, the city would have invested the same amount of money as we put into that project. But we wouldn't have the project. All we would have is public parking and less buildings. And a few houses adjacent to that that didn't support new businesses anyway because they never could. So mathematically, it was an easy, it was an easy thing. Like you make that investment and you gain public parking and you get the development that changes what you have in your business district. It has modern spaces that people want to relocate and grow in.
And that's more important to help the community than, we have some developers that that made, yeah, some inquiries, you know?
Sure.
We should say, yeah, we did this plan a couple of years ago and this, this is the outcome. And we're, we're trying to find something here that supports that plan. And, you know, revitalizing the CBD, increasing, you know, the residential, especially for retirees and stuff that want, you know, don't want to take care of a yard and all that stuff. I mean, that's what we should be talking about if we're gonna have a public comment. We probably don't want to, we probably want to talk about row houses and townhouses more than apartment, apartment buildings.
Sure. I mean, those are the venues, those are the venues that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's up to us to decide what, what we're comfortable with. Doing nothing is, was an identified threat. We did something.
Yeah.
Do you want to continue to do something that, that benefits the community in a, in a way that your business district becomes more vital? Or are you comfortable with where we are? Because the building stock that's there, you know, to your point before, we can go back and do form-based with the document what's there. That, that's easy to document. Those buildings are there. It's not a big area. We can document exactly. And we've gone through that exercise a little bit. How much square footage do you have in those homes that's a viable business use? And what are the, what are the, if you did a SWOT analysis of those buildings themselves, they would rate really poorly as an opportunity for any type of use other than what they were originally designed for, which is single family. But that's not giving you any density. And quite frankly, people haven't used them that way for a long time.
And they're really not contributing to the character of the area.
Other than identifying that with the S.
Yes. I went to high school, one of my high school girlfriend lived there.
Looking for a motion or anything?
I don't know.
It's a lot.
I don't, I mean.
I mean, we have to have a public hearing.
Sure.
But is, is the public hearing the first time people know about this or, or do we somehow get this out in the community before that public hearing? Or do we just have a hearing that, that where we present this information? Like I said, those are really the, the options we've talked about. Is have an informational meeting with the community or go ahead and have, and set a date to review this and approve it.
Well, you all make me funny. I'd be in favor of scheduling a, a public hearing or a public meeting to get input, you know, to, and present what we're thinking about. But instead of saying, we're gonna vote tonight on yes or no on this language, you know, to make the recommendation to council, I, I think I would rather get some input, you know, whether that's next month or, you know, whatever, first. And then we can set the, the hearing in November.
This is a long motion though, I would say. So is there another alternative where we could put something out like it's in the news, Fort Thomas Matters, and say, here's a document. This is why we think it's necessary. This is what we're thinking about. This is what we're thinking about doing. And people have a chance to chew on it. And we come in and that we're gonna have everybody hearing it for the first time and saying a bunch of stuff that doesn't even, you know?
You know, I'm, I'm in favor of that. But in conjunction with letting people come in and give us their input then at that, at that meeting. You know, if we just put it out there and we've got a hearing, you know, next month where we're gonna vote it up or down, I think we're, you know, it's.
Well, I guess the reason why I'm saying is because if we put it out there relatively soon and there's some kind of document that explains it, then we have this, and we just have the hearing. That if we have a bunch of people show up that hate the idea, then we don't make a decision. We listen to the input and then we say, okay, we're gonna take this information. But if nobody shows up and nobody cares, even though we put it out there, then we can make a decision. So here, we're automatically delaying it an extra month when, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that there's gonna be a lot of people that care. And so it's gonna be, you know.
It depends on how it's presented. I mean, I think people would care if they, if they realize what's being done. But if we, if we put out, you know, we're in a public hearing on, here's the text amendment, you know, I think people don't know what that means. And, you know, it's different when you've got a project, you know, we're gonna convert this building into this or whatever.
That's right. When the development plan evolved.
So that when it's just in a vacuum like this, I, I don't think you're gonna have that much interest. And, and I, I think, you know, putting out there, you know, and maybe we say, you know, in our advertisement for the, for the meeting, you know, this would allow all residential buildings under these circumstances.
How do you doubt everybody?
Well, I think, you know, I think, you know, certainly we have to comply with statute, but I think we can do more than statute. You know, if we wanted to put it, you know, put something in the, you know, Fort Thomas Matters or, you know, whatever. I mean, put it in a couple of different places and, and just say, we're, we'll take, we'll take public input in October and, you know, we'll, we'll decide on what we want to do and have the, the public hearing on it, on the actual language in November. And I agree, it does put it back a month, but I, I don't know. I just think.
Do you think it fits, do you think it fits in line with that? Do you think it fits, do you think it fits in line with that survey? I go back, that's the only public input we've had in the long run. Remember, we did our plan in the lab.
Yeah, I could tell you exactly.
Or does it fit our conference plan?
I mean, Elisa pulled out actually several examples of how it does fit. There was four examples here in front of me that, you know, speak specifically to the idea of, you know, increasing critical mass and whatnot, as we've discussed. So I think it, that there's evidence here that it's supported by our comprehensive plan.
I think that's real important. I don't know if we can, if we put something out to the public, we have a preamble that states this is why we're doing it, because that's the feedback we got from the citizens, you know, and we're trying to be responsible to the citizens, not necessarily to a developer that, you know, has expressed interest. I think it's real important to know this is being done.
Yeah, so, you know, making that division between whether you're supporting your community or, you know, unfortunately, developers always take on the, you know, the villain role, right? Because they ask the question. I mean, that's just the way the world turns that way. They're going, they're coming in and changing what you already have, so they're automatically villainized to a point. But it's whether or not you have provided the mechanisms to consider the things that you want to have.
But right now, a developer could come in, buy a bunch of persons, develop them commercially and residentially on the second floor, right? Right? We haven't really changed that. All we've changed is really the fact that they could do it on first floor, and we could kind of change, you know, the way we're looking at this out there.
Personally, I will say I like Dan's comment about the idea that we don't have a special meeting for, not that I'm in a hurry or any rush or anything, but that we have a special meeting to discuss it. I think that meeting could potentially be, you know, setting this public hearing, informing the public, getting their input, and if we feel comfortable at that time to make a decision, we make a decision. If we don't, we don't. If we get enough negative feedback and feeling that we're not ready to make that decision, but to have a meeting that may or may not be well-attended, may or may not get feedback, you know, I think we could kill two birds with one stone in one meeting, personally. But that's just my, I tend to agree on that.
So I would imagine that this is on the city's website, this is on their city's Facebook page, this is on Four Times Matters, there's somebody being interviewed about why this, why we're considering this, the text amendment is attached to it, and so people have, people know the reason, people know, people see the exact language, and then it would be really challenging to say that we didn't put it out there to everybody.
That was my question. Have you decided, is there a standard for how you typically have gotten this information out? Are you intending to go above and beyond that?
I wouldn't do anything. So we always just kind of operate, in the past, we put the stuff on the, and the public notices in the paper, and the things on the telephone.
Just the main one.
And then, that's just very important. And then there's just a lot of people that said, you know, we didn't get that, we didn't know what that was happening. You got the notice like one week before.
And you're going to get that probably in a matter of hours.
You will, but I guess I feel like if we have a meeting before we're voting on it, now we've got that to, you know, whether it's an offense for us or whatever else, but hey, you know, now you've got two months to think about, rather than the one month. I don't know, it just, you know, the input before that we've had, people came to the meeting and they weren't ready, and they said, well, I'm against this, but, you know, I just found out about it last night because the guy down the street told me about it. And I think, you know, and-
If we were elected officials, we would definitely want to have an informational meeting, you know? The fact that we're appointed makes us a little bit different. But I think from a public relations standpoint, it certainly would be a good thing to invite the public to sort of look at this and get their comments, and not just, well, if we feel led to vote that night, then yeah, we could vote that night and approve it, I guess.
It never happens.
Too much involved. There's a lot.
We could vote on it then, then it's not an informational meeting.
The text amendment is part of the text amendment.
I think you either said one way or the other.
Yep, I agree. Either your intention is to open it for public input, or you're doing a presentation for, you know, consideration.
I guess what I'm looking at is that if we have the language and we put the language out there, that's the only thing we can vote on. We can't change that language, I mean, without setting it for another public hearing. And so if we're really looking for input as to what we're doing, that we say, we want the input, and we come up with the language for the public hearing for the next month.
But like Brian said, we're only advisory on this anyhow.
Of course.
Still has the-
But that's a valid point, though, because technically you're passing it in its written form, and so you have to, you have to consider it the way that it's drafted, and then act on it in the way that it's drafted. So if you want to make any adjustment to that.
Well, if this is presented as a draft, and we just want that it's an input.
Sure.
Before we go any further, that's all we're asking.
What if you, what if you list it as a text amendment public hearing? It's being-
Well, if I was called here, just all information or whatever you want to call it.
And you would have to act on this.
Yeah.
It seems like we're telling people, we want to hear you, but here's what we're going to vote on, and you know. I move, you know, at eight-thirty, I'll move that we set an informational meeting to take public input and decide on language for a text amendment for the changes to the CBD, and that we publish our draft as what we would take public information on, or public info.
And, I'm sorry.
No, I think that's it.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Do we do it at our next regularly scheduled thing? Well, staff has to do a little work on how do you put this out there to the world, if you have enough time between now and-
I think you hold your regular meeting schedule.
Yeah, I think we-
You hold your regular meeting.
Rick, that's what I'm saying, we go to our regular meeting next month, we're saying.
Because we're really given two months for the public hearing.
Yeah.
Basically.
Well, I want these guys to have time to get their thing out there in the world.
The only thing I was going to add is that I think the approach is similar to what we did tonight together, is that we would be emphasizing to the public that we're addressing our zoning ordinance in total. And one of the significant changes is this issue that deals with the central business district. And that we may continue forward with it as an individual public hearing for consideration. So it's kind of the second part of that. But I think we should spend a little bit of time talking about the process in that same meeting.
I agree, and maybe an abbreviated, you know, presentation from you on here, you know, to the public. And who knows, maybe we won't get anybody, but-
And I think it's important to connect reality with what this, what's that, our community plan says. So the reality is that, you know, the community plan says we want more density. The reality is with the buildings that we have right there, we can't, we're not going to get any more density, and there's really no, so the only way to get more density is to do something like this, and so.
I think that's our, I mean, that's really our attention, I think that's all I-
The other thing we could do is, I mean, we can have some conversation, I think, that's what should be covered in our council meeting, and talk about what happened tonight. And so I can report that to council, to look, we're starting that process. And the planning commission had conversation about how we're getting started. There's some specific items with a different type of zoning approach with a form-based in our, that's been presented to them in our business districts, and they may, they want to have a public meeting, will announce that for people to have input, and that there's some text language that's being drafted that would address that.
Is council just a yes or no, or they can, can they amend our recommendation?
Theirs is a yes or no on what you've forward. So they can do, they can do three things with a text amendment that's forwarded. Now, they can vote yes and concur with your recommendation, they can vote no and not concur with your recommendation, or they could choose to have their own public hearing and fact-finding for a basis to make a decision on what they ultimately decide. And that hasn't happened since I've been here.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, fall in favor?
Aye.
I suppose. We didn't mention Inverness, the other third part of the business district. You didn't even look at that, or you did, or what, I didn't know what your thoughts were down there.
So, I mean, I agree with where it is, definitely. It is not a part of these amendments. Again, you have the incredible ability to-
That's just commercial tone, that's not part of the-
Yeah, but I mean, it's like, we've always wrestled with people that don't know, well, either go to Midway, that's the most active, I think, central second, Inverness, yes, State Design, in Barbershop.
I think it's signed over time.
Yeah.
Well, and quite frankly, it has some density.
It does.
I mean, they're multifamily off of every intersection.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it has what you technically need.
Mm-hmm.
So if you go vote for Thomas, those are multifamily.
My lifetime only, if it'll ever change.
It feels like multifamily on Sterling and Memorial, and that's the one, the pick she has, so.
I know it's late, but if we could just spend five minutes covering the last part of what Ron and Ash had just started, we started this off. So, we will obviously connect all of this back to the community plan, and our land use goals and those kinds of things are on the last page of your packet. We talked about the idea of it being a hybrid code, meaning conventional for your residential areas, form-based for your non-residential. And then in terms of process, best case, you know, given everything, you could probably complete the update in about eighteen months. I mean, feasibly could be quicker, but I, usually not, just to be really honest with you. We have traditionally used the planning commission as our working group, and it can be supplemented by team members of the design review board or the board of adjustments. And when I say the working group, you will get really tired of hearing the talk. And we'll spend, you know, conversations in the upfront, talking about policy, and then we'll have things like what you had tonight to react to. And then we'll have key public meetings throughout the process. The upfront portion of this, we will lay out the process, we will lay out, for your consideration, where those key meetings would be, what the purpose of those meetings would be, and go through that. Ron, was there anything else that you wanted to do down?
I don't think so.
And so my contact information is on the last page, in your packet. Feel free to call me, email me, or email me.
Very good. And as we go through the zoning ordinance, we're going to find ourselves elbow-deep in some sections and very cursory in other sections.
Right, very much so. Because I was very serious, you have a wonderful foundation to start this process on. I do not feel the urge to rip it up and start it over again, which I do with other clients, who knows.
It's good, because Kevin's got to memorize, partly chapter and verse.
Well, the worst part of that would have been in your shoes, is that even if it's the same number, you can't find where it is, and you can't, you know, it's like, I know we can't set back X, but where is it now?
As long as I get a good index.
That's all right. Thank you all very much.
We set the date and time for the public hearing?
Public meeting.
Public meeting? October twentieth, seven p.m.
Yes, for a year.
Well, but do we need to set the time and date for it?
I don't know that it's a formal public meeting, just a business meeting, six-thirty.
Are we doing our six-thirty business meeting?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
The twentieth, and they're-
Okay, that is, well, that's on the phone, says it's going to run right into the commerce market, though. We're going to have public people, and they're going to have to be able to hear what we're saying, and we're going to have some kind of amplification and all that, so.
Yeah, for the big meetings we've had, the speakers, and I think we would be prepared for that.
I'm sorry, what, is it?
The twenty, Wednesday, the twentieth, six-thirty.
Got it.
I don't know, Dan, that's a good, I mean, they're going to move indoors, though.
They're moving indoors, but when they move, well, I'll confirm that, but when they moved indoors last year, it was, they ended at six, and we're out of here with six-thirty. That was the idea to accompany-
Is that after daylight savings, start then?
Yeah, I think they ended by six at that point. So I'll confirm that, but I'm confident that that was the case this past winter, when they moved inside.
It's this enormous-
We could start at seven, so it's like thirty.
I mean, it's, I'll reach out to you, and worst-case scenario, you know, we can adjust that time for this meeting, since it's not a formal public meeting set time.
I love that everybody meets anywhere. Our council meetings used to start at eight o'clock.
I had two other meetings I gave up.
Right.
Run up at twelve.
One at five-thirty and one at-
Public meetings used to be later. They start, I mean, we used to start meetings at eight o'clock and run to eleven o'clock.
Keep a way to get home.
And Red's games used to start at eight oh five, surely they started at six forty.
Yeah, weird things.
Well, I'll move to adjourn now.
Now we can go.
Thank you all.
That used to be my special.
Can I touch?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you get more calls or less calls?
Less.
Well, you got your official copy to give me.
Well, maybe-